them to um is there other engagement or what have you so and we also need um things voted and approved on okay so with that being said um
should I take the role then?
yeah I was done yes ma'am we're next.
um Todd Hobler might be muted.
yeah sorry.
good Len Lanahan. Len are you with us?
trying to get in.
okay I am here Carrie Phillips.
here.
Jeff Stone.
here.
Susan Swartz.
here.
Janice Wilson.
here.
Travis Pulling.
here.
and when Len arrives we'll mark that in the record.
so I would like.
so we have a call.
you madam secretary. at this time I would like to officially call the Board of Student Area Board of Trustees meeting Thursday February 25th 2021 meeting to order um and also at this time I would like to make a motion to go into executive session.
second.
any all in favor?
aye.
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 thank you any opposed? thank you at this time we will be going into executive session. Things voted and approved on. Okay, so with that being said.
Should I take the role then?
Yeah, I was done. Yes ma'am, we're next.
Todd Hobler. You might be muted.
Yeah, sorry.
Len Lanning. Len, are you with us?
He's trying to get in.
Okay, I am here. Carrie Phillips.
Here.
Jeff Stone.
Here.
Susan Swartz.
Here.
Janice Wilson.
Here.
Travis Pulling.
Here.
And when Len arrives, we'll mark that in the record.
So I would like
So we have a corner.
You, Madam Secretary. At this time, I would like to officially call the Board of, Student Area Board of Trustees meeting Thursday, February 25th, 2021, meeting to order. And also at this time, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, we will be going into executive session.
You're ready whenever you are, Madam Chairwoman.
Vice Chairstone, if you will.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Thanks for your patience while we were in executive session. The Board of Trustees entered executive session at approximately 8:35 a.m. And we discussed in general terms matters relating to the employment history of a particular person, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, et cetera, of particular person or persons and other personnel-related matters. We came out of executive session at 9:31 a.m. and we did not take any formal action during this executive session.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. Good morning. Good morning. We're going to go straight to our agenda. And for board approval, we have the consent agenda. Items one through eight. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
A second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To the President, in the in the minutes we talked about of the last meeting, a student satisfaction survey is going to be requested to collect data on demographics and other information that can determine if there are discernible patterns that indicate whether or not a particular ethnic or racial group is having trouble or experiencing issues with a particular program. I'm just curious as to a timeframe on that, if you have any sense of that. And would appreciate if you don't, if you don't have one now, that you report on that at the next meeting.
No, it's in process, Kate. I checked with our provost earlier this week and Fabio put together a draft that Doug was reviewing. I do not have any further information, but it's certainly something that will be going out in the very near future.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions regarding items one through eight? Okay, so then I vote, I'm calling for a vote to approve said agenda, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. We have items for board information. Items one through 10. Are there any questions regarding, from trustees regarding these items?
Other than to say that I'd like to remind the whole group that we had pretty extensive discussions of the consent items and the board information items at our committee of the whole meeting, so it shouldn't be surprising that we're moving quickly through them here. It's not that we haven't focused on them or talked about them, but the way the new system is working with committee of the whole, that's pretty much where our discussion of items like this takes place in greater depth.
Thank you. I do want to highlight one thing, one point, number five within the facility rentals waiver. I want, I would like President Ruder to talk about the partnership with the Buffalo City Swim Racers. I think we are doing a great job with opening up our college to the community and coming truly the community's college. So Bill, would you take that just a little bit?
Abs- absolutely. On the facility report, there is a waiver of $708 for a swim organization called the Buffalo City Swim Racers. They reached out to us and our athletic director about possibly utilizing the Flickinger Athletic Center for their swim club. And Steve Mullen did an excellent job facilitating it. We have multiple users of that facility. We have STAR, we have Madi College, St. Francis High School, Erie County Underwater Recovery Team, and then Kenesha's College has some upcoming needs. But the thing that's was the most interesting about this organization, it's primarily an inner-city organization. They actually, almost immediately when they announced that they were going to be able to use the Flickinger Athletics Center, they had over 60 kids that registered in the very first two weeks. They limited their initial enrollment to children over the height of, I think, four foot six inches because due to pandemic and social distancing guidelines, they could not have instructors right in the water. At the time, they have asked for expanded hours, and again, we've accommodated them, so they will be in the pool about five, all five days of the week. They are currently doing, I believe, up to 90 minutes a day. And looking at their, sort of their demographics, the coach Mike, as I've gotten to know him, reports that over 60% of the children that are involved in the program earn less than 200% of the federal poverty level. And every one of the members except one actually reside in, in the city of Buffalo. And this all came to fruition through a generous donation of the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation, their project play, Western New York, who's actually providing $5,000 through its sports funding initiatives for, to help offset some of the costs. So it's, it's a win-win. It provides opportunities for children that may not have that opportunity, and I am certainly proud of the athletic director and the people that take care of the Flickinger Athletic Center to really open, open our, our facility. We, we are a community college and community facility, so sometimes we always say no, but I think this has been a great example of a great partnership.
Thank you so much, Bill. I just want to just add on to that how this program is really, this program is really focused into getting low-income, especially African-Americans children into the water, into swimming. You know, they have disproportionate rates of drowning in, in, or in that community. So this program was started and basically just teaching kids how to swim was the primary goal. It then morphed into now a competitive, so these students now, not only just, you know, are learning this one, now they are competing against other programs throughout this, this city or county or what have you. And by the, by us opening up the college to students, opened up access. The pools are far where they would have to travel to, and even though we have to use the smaller pool, it's a start. So many more students can now access being right on the transit station and the bus line. So I just want to commend the athletic director. I want to commend Bill for this partnership, and I'll stop there.
I just have one question about, I'm looking at the facility rentals forum. I see that we are still, there was a November waiver by Tracy Gass. I'm just wondering if anybody who is no longer with the college, how long that waiver extends? It looks like we're done in 2020, so is that the case?
I, I'm not sure which one you're specifically looking at, but most, all the swim ones involved a waiver that Tracy granted through the pandemic. All the swim organizations were not, based upon their initial contract, based upon X number of participants because of social distancing, we are not allowed to have as many children in the water. So that has continued on until we're able to be fully accessible again. I, I go over there every morning. The Flickinger Athletic Center from both a swim program is robust. It's the constant turnover of kids coming through that, but now the police academy is training there every morning. So every morning if I go over there, they're using the gym and the weight room because they used to use North Campus, and that is being used as a point of distribution for vaccines right now. So they, they have re-change, and I believe they're going to be downtown at Flickinger for another seven or eight weeks. And now we have sports starting, so it's, it's getting very good use at Flickinger.
I wasn't speaking specifically about any one program, just whether or not the sign-off of that waiver is still, you know, how, how long it goes. So it, it appears that by 2020, you know, anybody who's no longer with us and able to, you know, sign a waiver is, is not.
Yeah, that will be shifting. That will be shifting. Again, the, the swimming ones were for, until we're changing how many children can come and use the facility, but those other, any other facility waivers will be either Paul Denu or Mark Pacholak will be on that list.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because it's a little bit of an unusual item, I, I just, and without repeating all of my remarks from the last meeting of the whole, committee of the whole, item nine with the commencement 2021 virtual ceremony. Just a reminder for those on the call and for some Just a reminder for those on the call and for some who may not have been with us at the committee of the hall that we, we all, I think, are aware that we're having a rather robust conversation about the national anthem and its role and people's reactions to that within a growing diversity within our country, certainly and with our students. So I would, I wanted to encourage and I do still encourage people to talk to each other, those on the those on, those on this call. We have some folks who are extremely tuned into issues like this and I, I just want to make sure that we, through our planning for our commencement in a way that's sensitive to this national conversation we're having about the national anthem. I don't have a particular suggestion. I mean, I've heard people say we should perhaps add, you know, the lift every voice and sing to create a sense of, of balance and inclusion. Just remember, I think, that people are reacting to the national anthem these days in an overall positive way nationwide, but that not quite as universal a way as it has been historically. So we just want to make sure that those planning our ceremonies, think about that and don't just roll with the national anthem as item three on the agenda, just because it's always been there as item three. Think about how we want to handle ourselves here and what may be the way we look at this through fresh eyes informed by the national conversation that has been going on for several years.
Jeff, to follow up on your comment that you made at the committee of the hall, I've engaged staff to take a look at what other schools, what SUNY is doing. So we are doing some fact gathering as of right now, just, just to see what else people are doing, suggesting. So we will certainly inform the board when we have a recommendation ready for your consideration. In the meantime, we are starting the process. I believe the Madam Chairwoman and I are starting to do some videotaping for commencement as well as our 75th anniversary and also student orientation, I believe, this coming Monday. So we are starting the process, but we will keep the board informed about what we are recommending as far as the national anthem.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, we'll, we'll continue on. Those items, again, just work for board information. The next items, there are board items received outside the committee of the whole. These are for board approval. Items one, two, and three, I would just ask that we give a, just a brief description of those items.
Certainly. The Team Dynamic installment purchase contract is, we currently use a help desk software called ServiceNow. It's very labor-intensive, is not user-friendly. So ITS, led by our acting CIO Scott Ermer, did some due diligence. He and his staff looked at what other colleges are using and they looked at, they focused on a company called Team Dynamic. Team Dynamic offers an annual installment equal, almost identical to what we're paying right now. There is a one-time implementation cost involved, but there will be significant savings, not only in staff time and trying to program, but also ease of use for our students, which the help desk is oftentimes a gateway for students and staff when there are questions. You go through the help desk and you, you get your problems resolved. So if the board does approve it today, we will go to the county legislature for approval, although the first year cost is just a shade under $50,000. Since it's a multiple-year contract, it exceeds 50,000, so we would seek legislative approval. It also, it's an existing contract, I believe, with Suffolk County Community College. I don't have it in front of me, but so we will be piggybacking on that contract as well. I'll just keep going. If you have questions, let me know. KLEDA is a clinical affiliation agreement. Again, providing our students opportunities to get that clinical experience. And then the NFTA addendum, it's just an addendum, a modification for the spring semester. If you recall, we have this program with the NFTA that requires every matriculated student to spend $80 each semester for a all-metro transportation pass, but it covers security and maintenance of our parking and the two shuttles that we run. We saw that there was significant drop-off of utilization for the fall, fall semester. And NFTA, and I give kudos to Dean Hill Cheatham, who works very closely. She manages the transportation office, but working very closely with the NFTA to structure a, this one semester amendment that we're only going to be paying for the actual passes that are distributed to students. We, again, we normally pay for all students a fee, but this will greatly reduce the cost of the college just for this semester. If the pandemic continues into the fall, then I'm sure that Dean Hill Cheatham will certainly approach the NFTA about continuing it, but this is a, a good savings. It's again, just the one spring semester amendment. We are under the contract with them and it's a program that they have offered to all the colleges in Western New York at that all metro. So students can ride the bus, the rail, and the inter-campus shuttle that we provide to our students. Any questions? Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. So with that, I would like to request the motion to approve the Board of Trustees items received outside the committee of the whole, items one through.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'd just like to ask you a question in terms of the, the motion. The, Bill, we, we had some discussion last time about the clinicals that were being offered in, you know, health systems in Erie, Pennsylvania and UPMC and ARNOT and the, the answer to the, the question about those, those clinicals was that, I mean, it appeared to me anyway, that, that they were not being offered locally. Now, here we have the KLEDA, it's a pretty broad affiliation agreement and the question is what clinicals are covered by this affiliation agreement and, and why then are we, you know, I guess the larger question, sending students to Erie and places east for clinicals when we have these big health systems here where we have affiliation agreements?
Doug, I could offer some remarks, but if you're on, if you could provide further context, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. In, obviously in our health sciences programs, clinical, clinical training is essential as part of the training. And to varying degrees, the availability of clinical slots to the number of students and the number of hours of placement can sometimes be plentiful and sometimes it's a real pinch point for the number of students that we can enroll in our programs. Nursing is a large program and requires a lot of clinical, and so even though we have plenty of hospitals and nursing homes and health facilities in every nursing RN program, every associate's degree nursing program, the availability of clinicals limits the number of slots that, that programs are able to offer. However, again, we have, there are lots of health providers where, where nursing students can sit. The need to go outside of the area is often smaller programs, but smaller programs that also have smaller, fewer opportunities for placement. The, the good example for us is radiation therapy. Now, this is not radiation tech where you would, which we don't have, where you would go to any hospital and get your broken leg x-rayed. That's, that's radiation tech. Radiation therapy is where you are getting radiation as a treatment. And so there are many fewer places that offer radiation therapy or radiation treatment. Think about treatment for cancer. So for our full cohort of students to achieve placements, there are fewer hospitals that are offering radiation therapy and that requires us to have a broader footprint going into Pennsylvania and Erie, down to Erie. Does that help answer the question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Sure.
And I would add, Todd, that with the pandemic, a lot of locations were not available to our students. I will be mentioning during my president's report that the OTA program had a very difficult time and they actually partnered with a Care Patrol in Tennesseen Court, so it was a virtual clinical experience for both our first and second-year students. So I think academics had to be very creative and the, the department chairs and department heads and everybody really had to sort of scramble around to find those clinical locations for students in the health sciences this last semester as well as this semester.
Are there any other questions? Um, for the committee of the whole, we'll, we'll discuss this a little bit further. I do have a few more comments of regarding community rotations that our students do. But we could talk, sorry, we can talk about that later. My printer just went off, right, so. Okay, so I think we need to vote. We're on the three options for approval right now. They, we did, we had the motion on the floor, so all in favor.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Items are approved. For more information, we have an additional three items. And what I'll ask at this time is Bill, you'll lead us through a summary of those items?
Certainly, and please stop me if you have any questions. The first one is the August 31st financial summary. This is what is currently undergoing audit right now by our auditing firm, Dresch and Malecki. We anticipate that a presentation will be done by them for our March meeting, their audit. The numbers reflect that last year, the college actually sustained a operating loss of just a shade under $8.6 million. And that was after recognizing $4.6 million of CARES Act monies, one-time revenues. So really, our operating loss for last year is over 13 million. If you discount the one-time revenue sources, our fund balance has gone from 18 and a half million down to $6.5 million, which is significantly less than the board policy, which requires two months of reserves being kept. Certainly a concern of our auditors and they will be addressing that as part of their presentation. So we need to continue to improve our fiscal structure and there's, there's concerns moving forward. The, the, sort of the glimmer of hope is some additional one-time revenues for the current fiscal year. As you have heard me speak and Jeff speak, there's some federal dollars that are supposed to flow to the community college. The federal government approved a package, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act in late December. SUNY is not allowing us to spend down any of those monies. They're working with Division of Budget and the federal government to make sure everyone agrees on the guidelines on how to spend those monies down. That could conceivably bring us about 10.4 million in one-time revenue sources. And then the state budget also has a glimmer of good news right now for us. If the state receives $6 billion of aid through the federal stimulus, that is making its way through Congress, they, we would see only a cut, I shouldn't say only a cut, of 5% of state aid versus a projected 20%, and that would drive additional resources. Again, these are one-time revenue sources and I would suggest to the board that we want to make sure we restore our fund balance with these one-time revenue sources. I think we've done a good job. We've reduced the number of full-time employees in the last, since July from 749 to 699. Year-to-date, our spend on payroll is down 1.6 million. If you add fringe benefits in there, it's probably closer to 2.3, 2.4 million dollars. So we are trying to get our fiscal house in order. Again, I don't want to rely on one-time revenue sources going forward in the future. We are starting to work on the budget and working on enrollment projections as well as looking at our staffing and costing those staff costs out right now. So that's a quick summary on the August 31st numbers. Academic calendar for your information is attached. It's, Doug, as he indicated, worked on multiple, multiple scenarios. We make sure we try best we can to line our academic calendar up with the BOSIS-1 schedule, which includes all the component school districts. We want to make sure that if they're having a two-week break or a one-week break, that we don't make it burdensome for our students that have children in school, that they have the same vacation. It includes a start date after Labor Day, which I think is good. So you have that as information and then to trustee Marcel's point earlier, I've included my report from last month because we, I had to go to another meeting before the, the board meeting concluded. So each month after I do my president's report, I will include it as information under, for the board agenda. Any questions?
Bill, you mentioned that we, that you would ask the board to use those funds for, to restore the fund balance. What specific action do we have to take?
You would not have to do anything. It's just a matter of making sure when we budget for the coming year that we budget a balanced budget without use of fund balance or a very small use. If you recall, when Workday Project came online, the board made a conscious decision to fund some of the costs at a fund balance. And I believe the, this year's budget is predicated on over use of $5 million of fund balance. I, we need to, again, restore that fund balance. We don't want to have a situation where we're running into cash flow difficulties, making payroll in the future. So it's just a matter of making sure our fiscal house is in order, that we don't budget for the 21, 22-year a, a deficit. We, the Workday Project should be pretty much behind us for next, starting in September. And again, presenting a balanced budget, I can't tell you right now what I'm expecting for enrollment and/or what kind of tuition increase may be necessary, but it's really encumbered upon us to maintain a balanced budget for next year.
Bill, can you tell us what the total is? You know, what is a two-month level of reserve?
Two months is approximately 16 million.
Thank you.
Again, I, there is a current board policy that stipulates that amount. Two years ago, we were at 18 and a half million and now we're down to $6.5 million, so we, we have some work to do.
Thank you. Regarding the academic calendar, 2021, 2022, you have a, I can provide a brief summary of that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you, trustee.
I'm sorry, is that okay? You hear me now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so I, we don't have any further questions regarding that budget? An actual financial dashboard, dashboard, do we, from any other trustees, trust, questions or comments? Okay, Bill. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so for the academic calendar?
I, I went through that. We align the calendar with BOSIS-1.
Right, okay, I'm sorry. I was writing notes and I got, I'm sorry. So, never mind. As far as the interim president's report?
That was what I was to deliver last month. I have That was what I was to deliver last month. I have a report that I will provide for this month. If there's any questions on any items from last month, I would be happy to address them.
Trustees, do you have any questions or comments regarding the interim president's report? Moving right along, uh, policy and governance, trustee Maciel.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We did not meet in this past month, so I have no report, except to say, you know, we invite everyone who has thoughts on the composition of our committee to please send them to Kelly LaPiana. They'll get to us and policy suggestions are open to any member of the community who wishes to submit through Kelly.
If it is okay, I know next week have the presentation of the Equity Diversity and student trustee has to be excused to attend, to take a test, so we want to make sure he's able to do that. Um, I would like to rearrange the agenda just a little bit. Um, if it's okay with the trust, other, with my fellow trustees, would we do the student trustee report? Now, and then I will actually um, I, because trustee Holger has to leave as well, I will do the student trustee report. I will do the college senate report, bargaining unit's report, uh, report of the chair interim president, and then I'll do the Equity Diversity and inclusion presentation. Is that okay?
That's good.
Um, and then for the presentation portion of this, would that be recorded, Bob, for those who may have to leave? Or Bill?
It, it will be on YouTube.
Okay, perfect. So then if, the trustees will need to see that presentation and look back at that. So thank you very much.
And Kelly will send it out separately to all the trustees as well.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, so for the student trustee report, Travis?
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, so I guess the thing I want to report as far as student concerns is, you know, something we touched on obviously last month with, you know, just the hybrid modality that we're in and, and, uh, I guess the curriculum and how it's being presented to students, the main concern I keep on hearing from students is are, are we getting, um, you know, the education that we're paying for in this modality just because of, again, uh, you know, communication work concerns? Are we not getting, uh, you know, obviously that face-to-face, we normally wouldn't in classes, so I, I do hear frustrations from students still, um, you know, wondering, you know, what, what kind of education are we getting during this? Because they don't know how to compare to, you know, the classwork that we would have had if we were face-to-face. So, again, you know, I just want to continue to bring that up to the board, to everyone that's on, on these meetings, just because if there's anything that we can do to improve the experience of the students when we're here, I'm making sure that everyone feels that, you know, we're, we're getting a, a great education while, while we're here is something I just want to keep on echoing. I mean, besides I, I, that's just fun.
Thank you, trustee Holger. And I think that is a very valuable feedback and, um, this is why I want to, to stress the importance of our evaluation. And we'll be discussing this further, ensuring that the students are able to properly evaluate their courses and so we can make continuously, continuous improvements to to the courses and curriculums that, that we offer our students and they know what for, without, know without a doubt that they are receiving quality, top-notch education. Thank you. Okay, um, Colleen, for the college senate report?
Hello, good morning, everybody. Um, I just wanted to address Travis's concerns really quick, just so everybody is aware. Uh, the college senate is working with our distance learning team and several other instructors to create sandboxes, which are all of our staff can attend, but they're also recorded so that people can watch them after the fact as training for how to, different techniques for how to teach during the pandemic. Our distance learning department, who is led by Pat Ryan and Carol Seaver, are, um, we do a weekly session that's just like a, a training session through DL, and then we have a sandbox every week as well. And we rotate them through Mondays and Thursdays for our, our faculty and staff. Um, I actually, I did the first one in February and it's basically, so we have different people with different strengths present and we go through our courses through Blackboard and different things that we do to assist our students. So, um, like, for example, mine was picked because of my organization. Um, and then different faculty for the next few weeks, it's because of, um, you know, different modes of communication, OERs, which is our open educational resources and different things like that to help support our students. So we are taking the, um, information that we learned from the student survey from, uh, from the SUNY survey from last semester and making sure that we try to address some of the concerns and support our faculty. Our CPD, which is our Center for Professional Development with Dr. Mary Ann Partey, we are having an explosion day, we're calling it, in March. And it's about three hours on a Friday and we have different sessions throughout the three hours for faculty and staff to attend. And one of them is going to be hosted by myself and Dave Uzinski from the math department at City Campus. And he is our OER star at the college. And, um, so with techniques on how to help our students and different things that we've learned with teaching remote during the pandemic. And so we are definitely, um, you know, getting out there and addressing these concerns and, um, so, um, you know, we definitely hear you and we're working on it for sure. And, um, so I just want to let you know about that. We had our first college senate meeting in February a couple of weeks ago. And one of the big things we were working on this semester is to become like all of the other community colleges and move our academic committees underneath the college senate versus being in our gap structure, which is our governance and planning structure. Um, at the other community colleges, our curriculum is underneath this college senate because curriculum is the purview of faculty and academics. So we're working to move the college-wide curriculum committee, our new curriculum and development committee, general education, academic standards and academic assessment underneath the college senate and, which all of those are now currently functioning as if they are committees of the senate where things that they work on in their group come through the senate and then go on above us as we are a recommending body for the college. So that is a big, uh, it's really big. It's really exciting, actually. So I'm excited about it. I think we'll have two of the committees, we're going to be voting on that at the March meeting. And then in April, we're hoping to vote on the other two committees to move them underneath the college senate. We also have air, our college senate placement task force, who's actually also headed by Dave Uzinski, who's just like my major rock star for, outside of just teaching, but he just does all these different things for the college. So he is actually waiting on IRB approval to look at our success navigator data, to look at different ways that we can assist our students with self-placement for advisement. Uh, we are advising, uh, and we have academic advisors and counselors that do advising, but a lot of our students register their courses on their own and they do a lot of their own self-advisement. So we are working with our EAL, which is our English as another language faculty, English and math, because those, uh, they have co-curricular uh, courses to help our students eliminate time by not having to take developmental courses and they could take college-accredited courses right away. And so we're looking at all of that data to try and assist our students further as we're moving through. And we, we're also able to add a new EAL tag within Workday, which is, um, has, has gone live for students right now as well.
Before you go, I think I saw Kate's hand raised at some point.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it, yes.
I, I just had a question, Colleen, because it seems that this kind of opportunity to learn from each other about techniques on how to, you know, be effective online teachers, is that something that's optional for our faculty or can that be, you know, part of the training that goes through, you know, that happens, you know, as part of the job requirements?
Uh, well, that would be a labor issue, which would have to go through FFECC. Right now, um, the, all of the training is online and available for faculty and a lot of them are reviewing it. Our explosion day is optional because it is on a Friday, which is a teaching day from 12 to 3:00. So some people have courses that, um, you know, they have to teach on that day. So they will not be able to attend, but everything is going to be recorded and available for faculty and staff. Um, but yeah, right now at this time, we cannot require.
Maybe we can incentivize that. I think that we should consider that because, I mean, it's clearly very important for us to maximize the opportunity for teachers to use every technique at their disposal to make sure that their lessons are, you know, effective and are being communicated effectively.
No, I, I, no, I definitely understand. Um, and I, I'm, I'm not the correct person to negotiate that.
To do that, I mean, it'd be great to hear some ways that we could incentivize that. I mean, however, it just is so critical to where we are in the world right now.
No, it definitely is. Uh, and I, I know that there's quite a bit of faculty that are taking advantage of these opportunities and everybody's improving as we go along. Because I know it, it seems like it is our third semester, but the spring last year was kind of, you know, by fleet or fire, do what you gotta do. And, um, and then everyone really got their feet wet for the first time in the fall. And now we're tweaking and improving what we did in the fall semester. But it is, um, something that, you know, we're definitely working on and, uh, with all of our faculty.
That you're doing all that and I just want to make sure that everybody's taking advantage of it.
Yeah.
We can make sure that that happens. We'd like to, you know, push that because it's great work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I, I would say that perhaps we need to just have a separate conversation about this. Um, we can start an email chain of everyone who needs to be involved to see what can we do to incentivize it. And again, this is not a punitive action at all. We just want to figure out how, how everyone be successful and, and, and delivering their, their, their teachings. Colleen, I know you may not be done with your reports, but I, I do have to move on. Is there any way that you could send us the rest of your report?
I think that, that was just about it. Uh, we ended the meeting with Tracy Archie and she was giving us all the different opportunities that, for faculty and staff and students for Black History Month. And, um, we shared a few ideas on how to incorporate that in our classes, but also at our home. And then our next meeting is in March.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone who participates on the college senate for the work that you do. We appreciate it. Okay, so we will go to the bargaining unit report.
Denise, Andy Sacco had informed me yesterday. I spoke to him a couple of times yesterday. He is testifying. Uh, he's a NICEIT rep, New York State United Teachers Rep. They are testifying with members and staff of the senate and assembly on the proposed state budget and community college funding. So I went through the budget proposals with him yesterday. So he had to drop off at 9:45.
Okay, no problem. Um, Maureen, I see you here.
Hello, well, hello, how are you, man of chairwoman? Um, it just, yes, Andy informed me of that too. So he actually let me know that he's with members and staff for the New York State Assembly and Senate and he's discussing community college funding. So that's good. He's out pushing for funding and he's going to be talking to people today. So he said he would update you and Bill next week. But, um, I just, you know, uh, you know, we have a couple of hours here, so I'll just try and bullet point so that we go a little I'll go a little quick. Um, just, I wanted to mention, um, on the Presidential Search Committee, I'm sure that you will discuss it. It's 28 members. It's a very diverse commu, uh, very diverse committee. Um, I'm looking forward to it very much. It'll be very interesting. I believe we have three AAECC members on it, so, um, looking forward to those meetings. And I do, um, would like to stress that Mark Paul, Mark Paul and Kars was on it. And he mentioned that he would like to have some in-person meetings. And I actually think that would be a good idea too. Um, I think it would be good for us to meet in person than doing a lot of webexes. I know with the pandemic and everything, it can be hard. It's, we're choosing our next person, so we need to concentrate on that. Um, I figured for that, I just, um, I had some ideas of presenting some different areas of AAECC members, the departments that they work, and I just wanted to give you some information about financial aid. Um, the department had this, they've had a call volume of 13,912 calls. Their email volume has been 15,765 emails and their document intake has been 4,449 documents. They analyzed and awarded the CARES funding for $3.9 million. Their Workday implementation were hundreds of hours, over 600 hours of tests performed during the 2020 summer. They are going to operate and maintain two systems, Data Tell and Workday through 2022. So over the last 20 months, financial aid staff has shrunk by 40%. So they need to have, they need more staffing to cover the office hours for financial aid. They're one of the few departments that there's someone that is in on a continuous basis, um, even with telecommuting that's going on right now. The processing delays will occur as we struggle to launch Workday. And then they have a lot of regulatory compliance and enrollment management issues. The CARES Act's flexibility is in place to help struggling students and they've, they have required the financial aid department to calculate everything twice. So they are, it's very time-consuming and it's a very heavy administrative burden for the financial aid office. They're a very committed group of professionals who strongly believe in SUNY Erie Community College. They process aid, but their mission is based on the success of students who, if successful, become productive members of our area. They'll do everything to assess the efforts of students but are currently stretched beyond reasonable expectations. Um, I think there needs to be some, you know, we need to look into the financial aid department to see about getting them more staffing because, um, financial aid is the first avenue to get people to get enrollment up. So we should probably look at that. And when we have our meeting, we can discuss it. But, um,
I was just gonna say.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna say thank you for that. I've never heard the, the data so granular and, um, wow. So I just, I, I think I can speak on behalf of everyone on this. And wow. So I just, I think I can speak on behalf of everyone on this talk when I just say thank you for, to the hard work that everyone is doing running very, very difficult times. And I thank you for bringing that information forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so thanks, Maureen. I'll do the, my report now, and if it's okay, I'll just combine A and B. We're very busy over the last month. But just to highlight, presented in front of the Erie County Legislature Committee, the diversity and inclusion goals and plans. April, excuse me, Chairwoman April Baskin had a lot of very good questions regarding our diversity initiatives, our attrition initiative, our attrition currently, and what we're doing to help Black and Brown students at SUNY Erie making sure that they compete successfully. We do have a follow-up meeting with this committee. I don't think there's a date for that yet, but I will be participating in on that as well. I think one of the things that's very helpful right now is that we seem to have this running theme of evaluation of our courses, evaluation of the demographic, the success of the various demographics. And so within the next couple of months, people will be hearing a lot more about that. And reports out to the board will be coming probably really soon, as soon as the next board meeting. Regarding the Presidential Search, thanks, and I'll even ask my co-chair Lynn Lennon to speak if he would like. But we have finally completed and released the Presidential Profile. And thank you so much to Ms. Paula Sandy for her work and getting that together for us, as well as managing all of the communication. I heard that I had a nice letter that went out to staff and students regarding the updates of the Presidential Search. We've had our second meeting of the Search Committee, but this was the first one to orientate the Search Committee on the expected process. There will be ongoing updates via our website for anyone who wants to know where we are in the process. And if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me with questions and concerns. Maureen alluded to the dynamic group of individuals that are on the committee. And a lot that we completed over these last few weeks were due in part to all of you, both on this call and outside of this call who participated in those listening sessions and gave their endpoint input via either the listening session or the survey that went out. So thank you to everyone, even students who participated. That will really help inform the search process and also assure that everyone's input is involved in us picking our next president. So I just wanted to say thank you there. There will be updates coming up regularly and soon. So that, I'll end my report there, and I will turn it over, unless anyone has any questions for me? Or Lynn, if you'd like to add anything?
Denise, I think you've covered it very well. I think, again, I think the search firm and Paula did a great job in getting the profiles ready and the, you know, the information about the college. I think the launch has begun. Monday was the first day of the launch. So at our next meeting in March, we'll get a report on how busy the firm has been in taking names and taking applications and resumes and so forth. So no, I think you covered it very well. I think we're off to a great start. We do have a good committee, good, solid, diverse group of people, both from the college and from the community. And I think we're off to a great start.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I will have the report of the interim president.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, if you could put up the enrollment. I hate to even put this up on the screen, but I promised you from the start that I would never try to sugarcoat. Our enrollment continues to be a significant concern. As of, as of now, we're down 21% from last year on an FTE basis. Headcount, almost 21%. There is some headcount that will be added to advanced studies, but the numbers are, continue to trend in a negative direction. We're down across all areas, all campuses, all divisions, all higher education industry history. We knew spring was going to be down because fall was down, and our biggest market share is those students that come in the fall and then continue into spring. But we certainly have challenges somewhat to Travis's point. You know, we're shifting now focus from the enrollment to the retention, doing everything we can to make sure students are successful. So any barriers they are having to support success for the spring, we are addressing that. Workday is sponsoring a virtual event next week with the Chronicle of Higher Education. The title of that virtual event is "Reaching and Retaining the Students of the Pandemic", which obviously is very, very timely. We are constantly looking at ways we can drive enrollment. With the work of the faculty and the academic leadership, we piloted what we called rescue courses in the fall. We're adding additional courses for the spring. So we will have five classes that start March 15th and end when our semester ends. And it's really for our current students that are failing one of the subjects and trying to keep them from withdrawing, keeping them as a full-time student and keeping them on track to graduate. And just as important, somewhat of a segue to what Maureen said, keep their financial aid status in check. Because if they go from full-time to part-time, their financial aid eligibility changes. So we are trying the best we can, but it's still a troubling trend. And it's a trend throughout the state of New York. They've done, SUNY's done two surveys, and the numbers are just, without comprehension of why the numbers are down so much. The only, only glimmer of somewhat positive news, our first timers had a very small drop-off, only four students from last spring to this spring. But all in all, we're down everywhere we can look. Changing, again, please stop me, any questions, a quick COVID update. Our pointed distributions are robust. We have them at both South and North Campus. We report, I report to SUNY, Johanna Duncan-Portier on a daily basis. And I know it's not the college that are running those vaccine distribution, it's the county. But we are number one in the state of New York, the number of vaccines that have been distributed on our campus. As of yesterday, it's 17,301 total statewide. It's only 70,000. So we are doing a great job. We have over 11,000 first vaccines and over five, almost 6,000 second vaccines. And they've been open every day. They are even open this Saturday at North Campus. So they're alternating first and second vaccines. Our pool testing, AMIA Market, a lot of accolades, but we have a ton of volunteers that really stepped up this institution to make pool testing accessible and available. Recall, we have to do 100% pool testing of every student and staff member that's on campus for more than one hour per week. And as of the end of last week, we've done 4,270 pool tests. And we have only 12 individuals that had a positive test. So our test rate, our positivity rate is 0.28%. Again, we are doing about 200 tests per day. And again, it's a lot of people that are working together and students stepping up and, you know, making sure everyone's getting tested. Our Campus Clear, we're up to 5,400 users of Campus Clear. Again, if you don't, if you come on campus, you, we're asking them to go on Campus Clear to identify and self-report any symptoms. I actually reported the numbers to the Vice Chancellor yesterday, and she emailed me back, what is Campus Clear? So I explained the app to her. And again, it's been a good use for the college and an ease of entry for our students and staff that need to come on our campus. Over the past three days, I participated along with the academic leadership, Associate Vice President Segai. We had an accreditation visit, a virtual accreditation visit. ABAT, which is the Accreditation Board for Engineering Technology. They looked at four of our academic programs, electrical and mechanical engineering, construction management, and civil technology. We had our opening conference with them on Tuesday. I had a one-on-one meeting with the chair of that visit. We had a meeting with advisory board members along with students on Wednesday. And yesterday, we had our exit conference. A report was sent, a draft report to Associate Vice President Segai. We have seven days to correct any factual comments in the report. And then once that seven-day window ends, we will have 30 days. Once a report is sent to us officially, we'll have 30 days to identify what our implementation plan is and/or anything we are implementing. I will say, there were several weaknesses and several concerns expressed by the accrediting body. So we have some work in those areas. There's multiple levels. There's no weakness, a weakness concern. And so, again, we have some work to do in those programs. I mentioned the article about the Occupational Therapy Assistant Program. I will forward the article to board members just to save some time. But it was, it's incredible story of how our OTA program pivoted to, you know, Todd mentioning about the clinical pivoting, not having any clinical sites, but reaching out to tennis court to meet one-on-one with seniors virtually. But it's a heartwarming story because many of the seniors don't have that interaction. So our first-year students are interacting directly with people that don't have contact. And then our second-year students are sort of evaluating that interaction. So it's been, it's a win-win. And again, I will forward that article to the board members. Earlier this month, we had our board trustees onboarding. Thank you, Trustee Schwartz and Stone for participating. Tracy Cleveland and her staff are sort of heading that up. We listened to some of the things the board was interested in providing for in the future. So we are working on that. We'll have a follow-up meeting. The, there is a board policy that talks about an annual training for all members, not just new members. So we want to be cognizant of that board policy as well as we, as we put this in place. I've been invited to do a live couple-minute update at our Wednesday bi-weekly pause. So I participated in two of those, giving students updates, students and staff updates about important things at the college. I certainly talked about the search for the next president. And at our last meeting, we talked a lot about the virtual commencement that we're looking to do. Athletics, I sent the board members an amazing picture of our volleyball team. And they are certainly excited to begin play. Bowling has already started, and volleyball starts officially this Saturday. Swimming and diving starts March 1st, and then baseball, softball at the end of March. And then soccer practice can begin March 1st. Every student athlete must wear a mask at all times during practice and competition. And they are participating in all the testing that needs to take place. AutoTech, we've had a couple of meetings. We have a robust co-op program with Wesher at a vehicle tech training center. And we are looking to add additional partners. We reached out to Wesher to make sure they had no concerns about expanding our partnerships because they contributed significantly to the facility at the Vehicle Tech Training Center and much to the individual that Scott Beeler is and what he stands for. He said, absolutely, you know, bring Northtowns into the Vehicle Tech Training Center. So again, Adyam and our department chair, Joe Urick, have done a remarkable job. So we have entertained seeing if we can bring Northtowns in there, a GM program, and then ultimately maybe adding additional programs to the Vehicle Tech Training Center. As Sue Holdaway from ASC reports, that we are open childcare Tuesdays and Thursdays. No other changes since last month. She did report that the bookstore sales for February is down 56% year-to-year from last February. We received a lovely communication on Tuesday. Middle States, they have named the incoming chair, Dr. Anthony Monroe, who is the president of the Borough of Minnattan Community College, which is part of CUNY. They will be doing a Fall '21 visit, three and a half days scheduled. Originally, it was not clear of what type of visit would be, if it would be in-person or virtual. Yesterday afternoon, we received clarification. The plan is to have it as a virtual visit. So we have some work to do. As far as the foundation, I participated in the Foundation Board meeting earlier this month, gave some college updates. Certainly, everyone's interested in enrollment and our search for the next president. The chairwoman and I have now set a monthly meeting with the chair of the foundation and the executive director. And we also had a, finally, a check presentation, as you recall. Leonora Foot Beavers contributed $1,000 of a charitable contribution she received in her name. And this past week, the, our chair came on campus with Leonora, and we had a check presentation. And if you recall, the board matched her $1,000 contribution with another $1,000. And then Dean Hill-Cheatham is doing a remarkable job continuing to raise money for students and their hotspots. And then I do want to read a couple of things because the foundation had a large gift that was donated, $50,000 contribution by the O'Shea Foundation in memory of their first executive director. And when we were talking the other day, Vice Chairman Stone said, you know, I'm a history buff, but I don't, I don't know too much about the O'Shea Foundation. So of course, I reached out to Gal Fraser, did a quick research. And I'm just going to read a couple items about the O'Shea Foundation and why it means so much to Western New York, our community, as well as ECC. John O'Shea, 1886 to 1968, Buffalo native. His net worth in 1968, when he passed, was $58 million. Now his net worth would be equivalent to $426 million. He founded Trico Products Corporation and certainly became one of Buffalo's wealthiest citizens and philanthropists. He had a car accident in 1916 because of a heavy rainstorm, and that actually inspired him to research, manufacture, and market a windshield car wiper. And that led to the foundation and the formation of Trico Products. He devoted his entire career to the windshield wiper and improving it and worked 13 hours every day, worked holidays, took no vacations. And as his fortunes grew, he started a foundation, which ultimately became the John R. O'Shea Foundation in honor of his mom and his wife at the time. And he concentrated on hospitals and schools in the Buffalo area and cultural areas because he had a love of theater. And he believed that making charitable gifts was a privilege and a responsibility, and he chose to do it anonymously. And he had a lifelong commitment to charitable giving. And he really provided and ensured the foundation would assist Buffalo's not-for-profit educational, medical, and cultural organizations in perpetuity. And why I segue, because the John R. O'Shea Foundation contributed $50,000 in memory of Tom Baker and Lori Baker. There was a scholarship fund that had been established by Tom Baker Senior, who was the first executive director of the John R. O'Shea Foundation. He, Mr. Baker, was at Price Waterhouse for over 30 years. And he started his second career at the John R. O'Shea Foundation as its executive director. And he worked relentlessly to expand. And he worked relentlessly to expand what the O'Shea Foundation meant. He also was the very first Chair of the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority. And during his tenure, he and the O'Shea Foundation paid out $120 million in grants. And so, the O'Shea Foundation committed $50,000 to the Scholarship Fund for the Foundation. His son, Tom Baker, who was on the Foundation Board at one time, contributed $5,000. And I'm pleased to report, as of today, it's up to $70,000 in scholarships. And it's just a huge opportunity for students of need at SUNY Erie to be successful through scholarships. And I will say, Chairwoman Wilson really had a very heartfelt, you know, remembrance of what a scholarship meant to her and her career path. And, you know, hopefully someday, maybe you can share that with the entire college because it's a, it's a special story, maybe even as a part of your commencement speech, Madam Chair. A couple of other quick updates. I attended two meetings. I know the Chair mentioned our Community Enrichment Committee, but I also participated on the same day, two other legislative meetings, the Finance and Management Meeting. We had to send over the IT installment with KeyBank that the Board approved earlier last month. And that was approved by committee. And then, I also attended the Economic Development Committee. All of our capital projects that are proposed go through that committee. And I attended, and they approved a update of our wiring and mechanical update for all three of our campuses. And that was something that was identified as deferred maintenance by the JMZ report. I continue to have my monthly meetings with the County Executive. In fact, I am on for 1 o'clock today. And we have a good exchange of information. And I keep them posted on things that are occurring at the college. Some, well, I mean, it's sort of bittersweet news. Marty Ploey's been awesome, but we just received notification yesterday that Leslie Ortiz Bog is actually coming back and to the County Attorney's Office. And as of Monday, she will once again be assigned to ECC. So that's, that's, that's good. Not, nothing against Marty if he's on. Marty, we love you, but we also love Leslie. So it's great that she's coming back. A lot, a lot of meetings with the Chancellor and Vice Chancellor. I participated in Aspen Institute Workshop, Leading Transformational Change. We have had two or three budget advocacy meetings. And then, tomorrow, we're having a meeting on Pell funding. They're looking to do, allow Pell funding for non-credit workforce. I was appointed to the Amherst Chamber of Commerce. And that was March 5th. I got installed and installed by our very own Senator Ed Rath did the installation. And we also heard the State of Amherst addressed by Town Supervisor Brian Culpa. And then, I also participated in the, sort of, the first official Board meeting earlier this week. And the significant thing about the Amherst Chamber, I mean, it does great work. But the Foundation Board Chair, Mark Gallin, is also the Amherst Board Chair. So there is a win-win for the college, a win-win for the Foundation. Buffalo Niagara sponsored a couple of events. We had a virtual meeting with Chuck Schumer, who talked a lot about federal stimulus and the inner workings of the federal government. And it was great to hear what he had to say, being so close to everything that's going on. Then, we also had a legislative session with all the area Assembly and Senate Representatives. And then, we had breakouts. And I had the good fortune to be in a breakout with our very own Assembly Chair, Crystal People-Stokes. And again, talking about state government. Dean Hill-Cheatham and I participated, I believe, in two meetings of Say Yes this past month. And Katrina does a great job with Say Yes, so well-respected, so embedded in everything they're doing. And it's a, it's great partnership. I last month reported about Buff State Initiative. And we are looking, again, to partner with them. And we've had some progress. Phil Strubel has met with them and Doug about creating that pipeline of rejected Buffalo State applicants, but also Buffalo State stopouts. Just similar program that the Board was mentioned with Damon College. And Damon notified us recently that they sent 39 applicants that were denied acceptance into their college letters that they could co-enroll at SUNY Erie as an associate student. And they, we are reporting that six of those students have taken them up on that. So they will enroll at SUNY Erie, but be eligible for the housing and anything else at Damon College. Again, we're trying to expand our partnership. And for the rest of the report, I will just put it in writing. I know we are pressed for time. I will say two other things because enrollment is, is so critical. You've heard me mention and academics mention that we have this seven-and-a-half-week program at Megatronics at Northland that has been highly, highly successful. We are looking to do a similar program, Mechanical Engineering Technology, at Northland. Again, a seven-and-a-half-week session. And we are looking, in the fall of '22, to do four academic programs where we do half a program, first seven-and-a-half weeks, second seven-and-a-half weeks, the rest of the program. That way, students aren't taking five classes or four classes simultaneously. They can concentrate on two classes and then two classes maintain their financial aid eligibility. And a good thing that we need to do is improve on what we do with Buffalo Public Schools. We have a lot of different departments, staff, that have inroads in Buffalo Public Schools. And we don't have sort of a coordinated, concentrated effort on how we go about approaching Buffalo Public Schools. So enrollment management team meets every other week. I'm looking at all our opportunities, our CTE, PTAC, Say Yes, Middle and Early College, EOP, Advanced Studies, to really have a robust, coordinated agenda on how best to address the needs of Buffalo Public Schools. And then, fall registration begins March 29th. It's a, it's a constant cycle about registration. And I want to, I'm not sure if Travis is still on the phone, but Travis, thank you. Denise, thank you. We continue to meet every two weeks on our student orientation. And it's going to be a great improvement over what we do right now. And thank you for Paula Sandy on pushing the agenda and keeping us moving forward. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ambassador Rudolph. I was waiting for periods. So I see trustee polling is leaving us. Congratu-, good luck on your exam.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I won't, there's so much that I have to say and write down. But I guess the one thing I will pull out, just in the interest of our time, is just congratulations on your installment. That, that's an incredible honor. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And every time I think about the burdens of my schedule and my, you know, the amount of meetings that I have to do, I think about you. And I am forever grateful for mine. So, thank you so much. Kate, I think you, at one point, popped your hand up.
Very quickly. You know, the O'Shea Foundation has done a wonderful job. And certainly, John R. O'Shea did devote his life to the research, manufacture, and improvement of windshield wipers. But I just have to point out, and as we close out Black History Month and are on the cusp of Women's Month, March is Women's, not History, but something, Recognition Month. Mary Anderson, a Black woman, was the first female inventor of the windshield wiper, who got a patent in 1905 for that. A lot of people think O'Shea did that, and I just wanted to set the record straight.
Gal, your research did not disclose that.
That's okay. A lot of people don't know it.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. So again, there was so much great, some good, you know, a lot of great things within that report, some challenges. Of course, with the enrollment, very pleased with the COVID numbers. Thank you to that, those, that team of volunteers who are working to do that. I've only been on the campus a few times, but I get my temperature checked every time I walk through the door and sign in. So we are doing our part with that. I don't even, there's so much. The O'Shea donation, we want to thank them from the entire Board of Trustees and the college on their generosity. Bill, I would love to tell my story, and I would try to hold it back a little bit if I can because the scholarships are so important, so important. And I think a lot of times, we don't, we underestimate the value. And we don't see the long-term impact of scholarships. And I am living testimony of a long-term impact of scholarship and investment in me from funders. So that's why I do what I do, to try to give back a little that I have.
Madam Chair, if I could, it was not part of my report, but I just want to mention, Maureen brought up something very important. And we know financial aid works very, very hard. I will reach out to the Financial Aid Director, Scott Welch, personally, to see what we can do as far as allocating additional resources. Sort of a follow-up to what trustee Maciel, I believe, mentioned last month. We have the CARES funds. We're not eligible to draw down the additional CARES monies, but $3,997,000 will be directed, once again, to students. We want to make sure we're strategic about how we allocate. And we're, we're going to be under the gun. The guidelines we're seeing is we have to distribute those funds very quickly, once they're available. So I will certainly reach out to Scott Welch and make sure he has the staff that's necessary. And if not, what we can do to supplement the resources that he needs to be effective.
Thank you so much. Kate, thank you. So we have old business. Is there any old business? Oh, no, we don't. I'm sorry. We have a presentation. I apologize. I did all that rearrangement. So this is actually, it actually worked out perfectly. Kate, I see your hand again.
I just thought it might be a good time for like a two-minute, three-minute break.
Okay, you can do that. We can do that. Let's, let's, yeah, let's walk away for five minutes and we'll be back.
Thanks.
I think we're back in business. I know that we lost two trustees. I know that we lost two trustees, but there, there is. There's no other person. Voted upon, so that is okay, that we no longer have four. At this time, we're going to have a presentation of the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion. SUNY Erie Community College lawyer, employee update. Tracy Archie and Tracy Cleveland will present.
Good morning, trustees. Thank you for having us this morning. Bob, will you be uploading the presentation this morning?
Yes, he is.
Okay, I'm ready. Go to the next slide, please. This morning, I'm going to provide for you an overview or a reminder of our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion goals of the college. The next few slides that we're going to show you will be an overview to make you aware of where we stand or what we look like regarding the staffing of, in regards to race, ethnicity and gender. An overall view of the wages for faculty and staff. And then the last two slides will show you the EDI efforts and activities that we have been engaging our faculty and staff in to make them aware, as well as educate them on equity, diversity, inclusion and racial justice. Next slide, please. Those are our goals. That's just a reminder for you. I've showed these to you during the last presentation, but these are our goals so far. Again, they can always be a work in process to improve and/or add to as we move forward and try to match our SUNY Erie Excels strategic goals overall. Next slide, please.
Tracy, before you leave that slide.
Sure.
Two points. Can you, can you comment? Because previously, it was equity and diversity. Why the "I" added? And then also, can you provide the trustees sort of where we are with our updated plans? I know it's been in works and it's certainly something that the trustees have been asking about.
Yeah, so the "I" was added because, you know, nationally, equity and diversity is not alone in just equity and diversity. There are parts that we have to include and that's why the inclusion was added to it. This is the national standard that most colleges and nationally that we're using to improve more than just race, ethnicity, but to include gender, to include cultural and racial justice types of pieces. So the inclusion has been added to everything. Right now, our office still stands as equity and diversity and hopefully our conversation going forward will add inclusion to that as well. In regards to the diversity plan, it is in some final stages. Thank you to Ms. Paula Sandy and her team. They've been working on a lot of edits. They've been working on a lot of edits that add activities and educational pieces and that adds data to the plan. It's going to be a different makeup of what you see on the website right now, but it is in its final stages so that we can have a revised, more updated piece on our website. And then again, just as a reminder, the college's overall strategic plan, the SUNY Erie Excels, will be, we will be in alignment with that plan when we do the final revision for 2022. The dashboard also is in the hands of our marketing team. Thank you again. They're working on creating that using the data that we recently received. So that's where we stand with that. Is that okay? Bill, did you want anything else added to that? Okay.
Perfect.
Next, next slide, please. Okay, so this is a snapshot of the faculty and staff by race and ethnicity from 2019 through 2021. And as you can see right now, over the last three years, we are still predominantly a white faculty and staff institution. Secondly, are the unknowns. Unknowns are those individuals that have not self-identified or self-reported their race or ethnicity. They are not required to do so. It is an option for them when they are hired here at the institution and as they continue on. So people can change that if they would like. They'd have to reach out to Human Resources or actually just go into Workday to update it. But right now, 16% are unknown and you can see the other figures there. Our Black and African-American, our Black and Brown, as we could, as we generalize, are still very low, but those are our goals going forward to improve those. Nothing has changed over those last three years significantly.
So my question would be on this slide. What are we doing to change it?
Well, that's a, that's a big question, Chairwoman. The college has a lot of challenges and a lot of work to do that we are acknowledging and recognizing going forward. We, over the last few years, have improved and increased our hiring. The places where we hire, the places where we recruit, rather. We are utilizing our networks. So that is the biggest push right now. And we're, you know, we're promoting from within. So you'll see as we go through the next few slides that, you know, it's standard that there's some challenges that we need to continue to work on. But that's the biggest thing right now is the recruitment of hiring. And right over the last year, there has been very little of that due to our COVID pandemic status and budget constraints. Right now, we're just working on adjuncts, not full-time hires. And that's where we want to make the most impact in the classroom in particular.
Okay, so let's, let's look forward to, you know, post-COVID and things of that nature. But we should probably develop some sort of plan, right?
Yeah.
To actively tackle this issue. So I'm wondering, just specifically for our faculty and staff, I'm wondering if we should begin the work of an actual recruitment plan for when things shift. And that would include internal hires and being very intentional on where we recruit from. What do our search committees look like? How, how are our search committees trained on racial equity and diversity matters, things of that nature? And I know one thing we're doing with the presidential search is if the pool of candidates is not diverse, we're casting another net. And I think that is another thing that we can do internally. So I would like to see a specific plan for recruitment regarding this. Our EDI, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, if I can interject a little bit on this as well. Part of our racial equity impact analysis action plan does include interjecting and fusing RIA, the RIA 2, into our hiring processes. And I know that prior to the pandemic happening, Adim and I had a conversation about doing some intentional recruitment for her area. So we're focusing on trying to do intentional recruitment. And as Tracy mentioned, an adjunct, hiring adjuncts of color and trying to diversify our adjunct pool is something that we've been focusing on. I mean, Tracy's been sitting on all the search committees where adjuncts are hired and she can look and see what the makeup is. And just also be able to interject her, you know, the racial equity impact analysis process into that hiring process. Because we're discovering that not, not something new, but often, you know, adjuncts are given preferential consideration when full-time positions open. So if we don't have a diversity pool amongst our adjuncts, we're not going to have a diversity pool amongst our full-time, because that's typically where we promote from. So she might say something, but I know we talked about doing a hiring, a virtual, it actually was going to be in-person. But again, it was going to be intentional recruitment for the science and math and the STEM occupations that we were working on. So we intend to continue to do more of that, the intentional recruitment. Prior to this, we were posting ads in The Challenger. We send out our job announcements to a whole list of associations and partners that we work with as well. So really, a number of, number of different areas that we've been trying to infuse the racial equity impact analysis tool into.
And in addition to that, Tracy and I are getting ready to do a search committee training model for appointment committees and search committees that focus on the hiring. So in addition to the, the online training that we already have, we have decided to add ourselves into that process to kind of follow up and, you know, just become more current in hiring practices across the board, so.
Yeah, so it's our hope that once we, well, a desire that once we do the search committee training that RIA coaches, and we've got probably about 20 RIA coaches right now. The RIA coaches will be sitting on the search committees and Tracy can ease up on that a little bit and we can spread the, spread the wealth with the others. And they've expressed, expressed a desire to sit on the search committees as well.
Tracy and Tracy, it's Steph Stone. Do you, thinking back to the layoffs that we had in the fall, which were unfortunate but necessary, given where, where we were. I know that was a, that fell, of course, disproportionately on newer members of the faculty. Do you guys think these numbers would have been different or better i- in the event that, that we hadn't laid off that group? In other words, if it was a higher, did our incoming group that we unfortunately had to lay off have a better set of numbers than these that would have helped our overall numbers?
Oh, absolutely, because I can think right now, there was an African-American female we laid off, an African-American male, we had a Native American woman we laid off. So there were a number of people of color that would have fallen into, to keep these numbers up that we had to end up laying off. We did a lot of hiring. Some of our most recent hires had less than a year of seniority and they were not permanent. They were people of color and that was a result of us intentionally hiring more diverse, pushing to hire more diverse candidates.
Yeah. Next slide, please, Bob. This is a different view of the previous slide of race and ethnicity. It shows in the blue the underrepresented minorities. Underrepresented minorities qualify as the African-American, Latinx, Native American employees. The non-underrepresented minorities qualify as the Asian and white population. And as you can see, over 2019 through 2021, we have not changed again very much. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of our gender by faculty and staff. And females from 2019 to 2021, we are still a female populated institution, which is, you know, always a great thing to have women in the building. Always good to have women in the building, but we haven't.
Women's rights after March.
But we haven't moved the needle much. Those, those dynamics have remained the same. As you can see, we are at a 52 to 46% right now. Non-binary, just, just in case you don't know what that is, those are individuals who don't identify as either male or female. They're just, they're a combination. They don't like to be identified as either or, they're a combination of both. It's a part of the transgender population. Most non-binary people do not self-identify. Okay, next slide. Okay, so our senior executive staff, you've recently learned and approved our recent promotions of deans to associate vice presidents. And so we've made a significant change there from 2019 to today. We're at a 50/50% of senior executive staff at the college in regards to underrepresented versus non-underrepresented. In 2020, as you can see, we were really, we went, we increased from 2019 to 2020 with the underrepresented population for 72%, but we've been able to balance that out right now, which really is good.
And I can say, I was going to say, when I first arrived in 2014, I was the only African-American female that was on the executive team. So we've certainly come a long way since 2014, so.
Yeah, it's great. Next slide.
No, just while you're going to the next slide. I'm going back to the faculty and staff makeup, racial ethnic makeup. Wondering if you can stratify that for me by position? So how many are at various levels within the organization and as opposed to just the larger number? So that's just the follow-up.
Yes, Chairwoman, I believe that Fabio, I think Fabio has talked with the team about those, those dynamics. So we can put something together like that and share it with you.
Yes, we can. I'm sorry, it's Adim. Good afternoon, everyone. I think just to add to that, going back to the, the gender sort of outlook. I think what we are also doing, I think we had a conversation as we were preparing some of this, is that we are going to look at it by division, because that is not the accurate representation when it comes especially to the engineering technology. Not so much in the health sciences, but certainly in the engineering technology, there are some, a very low number of gender when we look at that. So that's another area that we're focusing on as well, just to point that out.
Thank you, Adim. And Adim has volunteered to lead that effort as we were meeting. So we, we thank her for adding that to her plate as well, but she won't be doing it alone. But she, she raised a valid point when we were meeting about, you know, the true reality of what the breakup or the breakdown looks like. So the gender breakdown for senior executives, as you can see here on this slide, 60% male and 40% female. Again, that's, that may look different when we do an actual breakdown of the different areas. So we can follow up with that in a, in a later meeting. Okay, so this is the faculty and staff diversity overall wages by gender. So when you do a comparison of men versus women here at the institution, what you see in the gray is the difference in males and females here. So let's see if I can. So from 2019 to 2021, the difference has continued to increase in favor of the male side of the house. Those are the general wages. That's the total general wages for each of those groups.
It would be helpful to see, you know, length of service, because that certainly impacts wages on this. So it might tell a fuller story.
Yes, I'll make a note of that. A note of that, trustee. Fabio, did you want to add anything else to this particular slide? It's pretty clear.
That's a great recommendation. Thank you for that. Well, we can look at it across a number of dimensions, including length of service, obviously by unit, down to individual race and ethnicity groups as well. So any suggestions as to different views that you might suggest, that any of the board members might suggest? It's definitely welcome.
Thank you. Next slide, please. The, the next few slides I'll go through will give you a snapshot of the educational programming that we've done to engage and encourage our staff and make them more aware about racial justice issues as well as diversity, equity and inclusion at the college. So you know, we had the Diversity Academy Reading Project where we brought in Debbie Irving last year. And we also had a Students' Success Conference that was for students, but we had employees participate in this as well. Both were huge opportunities to educate the, the college community. And, you know, it really does help as we, as they move into their classrooms each semester. We enroll different types of students each year. Even with enrollment being down, we still have current students who, you know, need to be taught differently, that need to have conversations different with their instructors sometimes. So it's just really good for them to have these types of programs to make them aware of maybe, you know, some different styles that they could use in the classroom and in our offices respectively.
And thank God we planned them early in the year. We were lucky that February 28th wasn't a super short event.
We were so lucky, right? Back-to-back, two months, back-to-back of, of large attendance. Next slide, please.
Hey, Tracy Archie.
Hey, Tracy Archie.
Yes.
If I, if I could, I know when we had presented part of this present, this, this presentation as well as something directed at our students to the legislature. But one of the questions that seemed to be asked quite a bit by legislators was that conference free.
Yes.
I know I'm not going to be here long-term, but I would urge the college to make these type of events free to our students and our staff. Because I think, looking at a conference free, I know we talked about scholarshiping and things like that. That, that could be a barrier for students and staff to participate in, in events like this because they're so worthwhile. But we can't create barriers to participation, so it should be a line item in our budget that we address moving forward.
Yes, and Dean Chitam Hill did address this as well. The conference was, was free to students. There were outside groups that brought students, and I believe that there may have been a fee for some of the the adults in the group versus the students. So there, she's going to, she's going to clear that up and provide some more clarity is, is how that went, how that went out. Because even in the promotion and marketing for that, it was a free event to, for students in particular, so.
Tracy, if you'd like, I can address it. This is Jamie.
Oh, sure, JB.
So when we booked the event, we didn't have much capital to work from. So what we did was we found sponsors. So all of the ECC students that attended were pretty much sponsored by either my office, largely by SGA, I believe even your office. So SUNY Erie students were free. There were other campuses, like Kenesha's brought a small group, I believe Niagara may have brought students. And we did give discounts, but those institutions did pay for their students. So the money that was paid for students did not come out of student, there's the students' pockets.
Yeah, no, ideally, we would have, it'd be nice to have more sponsorship, but I think that with that being the first major event that we were able to pull off, we did an amazing job in such a short period of time to get sponsors on board. But I think that's the key to have more sponsorships and then it can be a free event.
Exactly, and we do have CNA money, so we, President Ruder, I, I absolutely agree. And I think going forward, that would be one of our main aids. But I would like to stress that our students, our students did not pay out of their pockets, but there was a cost.
Thank you. You've heard us talk quite a bit about the racial equity impact analysis. This is just a reminder, this is one of our large educational pieces that we do for employees. All faculty and all staff have been invited to participate in a RIA training over the last two years. We've been very intentional about introducing this tool. And so we have many employees that have volunteered to participate. They've gone through the training. And several that have agreed to go on to become RIA coaches where they can begin to use this within their own areas respectively. We'd like to eventually move the college towards using a racial equity lens in all policies, practices, and decisions. So that is the goal going forward. It really does make a difference in how we can recruit and hire employees, but also retain students in our buildings. Next slide, please. That's a snapshot of where we are with the RIA tool. Again, we are doing this in partnership with the Race Matters Institute. They facilitate the training. We provide the bodies. The Presidential Search Committee, as Trustee Wilson has mentioned, the Presidential Committee did participate in the RIA tool, excuse me, the RIA training. And it has proved to be beneficial and will continue to see that as we move forward with everything else. I know one office in particular, and I just want to give lift up Verlaine Quinney's area. Her office, they meet regularly to utilize this tool in their area. I know Nate Wallace's area, they are using this tool actively. So it is something that can be used actively if we continue to participate in it.
What areas are those?
Nate's area is the Global Education Department. That's not the formal title. Someone can help me with that. And Verlaine Quinney's area, I believe, is the counseling, sorry.
So earlier, we talked about the Financial Aid Department. How are we capturing how many new attendees are, are
Participating?
Participating? Because I know that is not mandatory, but oftentimes, you know, some, some of these trainings get put to the back burner. How, how are we encouraging? Definitely every manager, every person in leadership should have went through this. That, that should be an expectation.
So I
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I know that Tracy has an Excel spreadsheet of every single person that has participated, and we can break those down into individual areas of the college. But a staff all email goes out when the training opportunity becomes available. Again, a staff all email goes out and we encourage it, and we encourage it at the executive leadership level as well for them to impress it upon their individual areas.
Does everyone in executive leadership
Yes, and I would also say also that the most recent training that we had, we had probably about, I think it was 51 people that attended that training that was specifically set up for us. So that was one of the last trainings that we had with the, some, a number of people from that training are now engaged in the coaches' training that comes after that if they decide to want to move on. So we've been keeping people attend training and we've had others. There's a spot offered by the community, they should, they do reach out and say, hey, I've got two spots. Are you, do you have anyone else that you want to sit for training? And then I reach out to people who are waiting lists to attend so that they can attend. And part of our action plan is moving forward.
We can be more targeted as well, Trustee Wilson. We can actually go through that list and pull out those that are in leadership and management positions to see who hasn't gone through the training and invite them, remind them and re-encourage them to participate in it as well. So that is something that we can do going forward.
Yep. Yeah, I was gonna say, that's part of our action plan for 2020 to 2025, to continue training and to look at doing training at a department level. So make sure we capture all departments. So I'm hoping that I'll have an opportunity, Tracy, now I'll have an opportunity to come back. I mean, one of the next steps for our action plan, I met with Colleen Paul this week about presenting this to the College Senate to get buy-in from the College Senate. We do have a number of faculty members that are teachers, that are, that are part of developing our action plan. So I'm hoping to come back, be able to present the action plan and maybe a deeper conversation about yeah and what we're doing in the college. You guys will let us present?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. This is an overview of some faculty and staff events that we did over the last year. The Diversity Academy continues to do a book read, a college book read, where we invite everyone to participate in reading a selected book. And the Summer 2020 Read, our professor Jason Steinert, he co-led that with our Diversity Academy team. So the Dimensions of Gender event and the Inclusive Training event, both Diversity Academy and Anti-Racism Task Force provided opportunities for an educational piece on gender and the LGBTQIA community. We did that in collaboration with Clean Air Coalition and then the Pride Center. And then we most recently had a Martin Luther King Jr. presentation, Pushing for a Better Democracy, where a lot of our faculty and staff participated. The taping of that event is available as of today, and I'll be sending that out. And it will also be included in our Center for Professional Development for people to access and re-watch it if they'd like. Next slide, please. In the summer of last year, I provided a workshop during our CPT, CPD Summer Institute to assist faculty in the classroom of some of the stumbling blocks in regards to microaggressions, implicit bias, cultural competency areas, and examples of, some examples of where, you know, we might have some pitfalls in relationship or language and communication barriers between students and faculty. So that was something that went well. Next slide, please. And then most recently, we had the Black and Blue Conversation, Policing Communities of Color, which was hosted by our Anti-Racism Task Force. Very robust conversation and opened the door for us to have more conversations around the nationwide events of communities of color and the black and blue relationships. So these, again, are opportunities for our faculty and staff to become more aware of what's going on and how it relates to us as faculty and staff here at the college to improve our relationships with our students and to improve our relationships with each other. And I believe that is the last slide I have. Thank you. Thank you, Fabio, for providing all the data, and thank you to all the different committees, a part of Equity and Diversity, that helped to continue to educate. As a reminder, EDI work cannot be done by the CDO alone. It is a collaboration between different academic leadership, different deans of students, all levels at the college. It is everyone's responsibility and we can continue to move the needle forward through our participation. There's never a dumb question. We, and, and there's never a time where we shouldn't be having the conversation. We have to talk about it in order to acknowledge it and move it forward and improve our relationships. Thank you. Any questions?
Tracy, this is Lomani. I've been on the phone. I couldn't get through on the meeting today. Could somebody compile the slides for me and perhaps email me a copy of the presentation?
Yes, that will be taken care of.
That'd be great. Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome, Mr. Lenahan.
So I guess the next step is just to look forward and get, and I would, I'm welcome to see the plan going for of how we're going to address these issues. Also, looking at a breakdown of the, the racial equity gender breakdown of our students in, in each program. And also, I would like to see, and this will take a lot of other people as well, talk a little bit more about what we're going to level that point for our students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, the plan for next month's presentation will be the focus on the student side. I know the presentation for the legislature was everything combined and there's a lot of information. So next month will be really the focus on our students.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So going back to the agenda, is there any old business? Is there any new business? There is a section here for another executive session, which I don't believe is. Okay, so at this point, I will like to request a motion to, oh, excuse me, let me do this. Our next scheduled meeting is scheduled for March 25th, 2021 at 9:00 AM. So we're back to 9:00 AM. And at this time now, I would request a motion to adjourn. All in second, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that concludes the end of the Board of Trustees meeting.